Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conken.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
Present.
Entertainer motion to seat an Alderman as Mayor Pro Tem for the evening because the mayor is out of town on business.
Your Honor, I'd like to motion that Alderman Tempest be Mayor Pro Tem, be seated.
Is there a second? All those in favor stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none heard, motion carries. Mayor Pro Tem, Tempest, have a seat, please, sir. It's all yours. Thank you. Reverend Colburn, will we all stand and have Reverend Colburn?
Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you for year fourteen hundred. We thank you that you brought us all the way. We looking for a prosperous year in fifteen. We thank you in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I'll face the flag and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, mayor's comments. He's in Washington DC, meeting with our state representatives and federal representatives, trying to get more participation for funding for the development of the Lakefront. So, we wish him the very best in that regard and thank him for his time. And by the way, that is on his own expense. He's taking the funds, not from the city, but from his campaign funds, so wow. We appreciate that. Audience time.
Hello, my name is Jack Dye, 235 Gillette Avenue. I hold a bachelor's degree in science for engineering with cognitance in business, marketing, and supply chain management from Michigan State University and an MBA with concentrations in finance, strategy, execution, and valuation from DePaul University. I've observed several instances in which I felt I could make a positive impact on the city of Waukegan, and I decided that the best way to do so is run for city council. I personally gathered more than the required number of signatures, properly completed everything, and submitted my petition documents four days before the deadline. I was not, however, properly issued a receipt for filing my nomination papers. My name as a candidate was not included when an article in the paper appeared regarding independent petition filings. A week later, a follow-up article was published stating that my name was left out as my file was misplaced by the city clerk's office. The incumbent Alderman challenged my petition, which is the right of every registered voter in this city. Seventeen signatures that were deemed suspect by the challenge are all registered voters in the sixth ward. I gathered twelve signed letters over the holidays from the seventeen stating that they in fact did sign my petition and their signatures were real, genuine, and theirs. These letters were deemed hearsay at the hearing as the objective did not have time to review this evidence before the hearing. I was told by the city clerk on December 31st that anything I wanted to present should be brought to the hearing. The board, in my opinion, based upon in my interpretation of the Illinois state election law, did not properly review the signatures on my petition and did not accept my evidence as they should have. The board motioned to remove me from the ballot as they determined I was six signatures shy of the required fifty-two to remain on the ballot. I was informed that I had thirty days to file an appeal with the clerk of the circuit court if I wished to do so. After personal research, I discovered that I have five days to appeal the state law. My petition to appeal has been filed today. Another request from my attorney this afternoon requested a copy of everything in the official file, including those twelve affidavits that I submitted. In the official file, those twelve affidavits were not there. I don't know where those are at, but those are not there. I'm going to be requesting those again. I want to announce the city of Waukegan, I'm pledging to the sixth ward and all residents of Waukegan that will remain a candidate for this ultimate of sixth ward of Waukegan, either through a successful appeal or as a write-in candidate. I will leave you with a quote from Waukegan's own Ray Bradbury. "People ask me to predict the future when all I want to do is prevent it. Better yet, build it. Predicting the future is much too easy. Anyway, if you look at the people around you, the street you stand on, the visible air you breathe, and predict more of the same. To heck with more, I want better." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Eric McCormick, 215 Douglas, Waukegan. So, I'm one of the seventeen that was told my signature was invalid on the petition that I willingly signed for Jack Dye in his race for sixth ward Alderman. And I would like to know after, you know, being a community healthcare provider at Vista East, being a sixth ward resident, as I stated in my address, and also a veteran, why my signature was not deemed credible in taking off the petition.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Perry Keller. I reside at 719 North Genesee in Waukegan. My signature too was taken as not legible, and it's kind of disconcerting because I also did an affidavit which was showing my signature was me, and that was not even put into consideration. And I don't know who personally looked through the signatures, but I do have from a signature analyst, an article on signature changes. It says, "My signature changes." "But my signature changes," you say. Well, yes, we are not machines, and just as your behavior will change somewhat depending on your mood and situation, so will your writing. Just as if I took a photo of you today and another of you tomorrow, they wouldn't be identical, but they would still both be recognizable as you. So, it is with your signature, core personality traits will always remain the same, but your mood, your level of expression, and the time and care you give into the writing will all change as your signature looks. But remember, when you are analyzing writing, you are not looking at writing style, you are looking at strokes within the writing, and these will more or less stay the same. If, for example, your signature slants more to the right one day and more upright another, it just means that on the day you write slanted, you were feeling more outgoing, more emotionally responsive than you are the day you wrote it upright. It doesn't mean you weren't you on either of these days, it was just a different situation. So, don't worry if your signature or any of your writing is not the same all the time. This is known as being human. And this is from Fiona McKay, a signature analyst. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Hello, my name is Julius White. My signature was one of the signatures that was contested on Jack Dye's petition. I've resided in the sixth ward since December of nineteen ninety-nine, originally at 428 Gillette, and currently at 917 Fairfield Court. I also signed the affidavit he brought by to verify that I had signed that signature. And I'm upset that it was discarded. I'm not really sure what the process is. From what I understand, it's a comparison to my, to the voter's registration card. My signature is fairly unique. I don't think it, I don't know what's going on with it, and I'm concerned about it because this, it doesn't make sense to me. And I feel discarded, and I don't feel good about it. I'm not happy with the way this is going down right now. And I'm not sure what's going to happen next, but it's kind of embarrassing for me.
Thank you, Julius.
Hi, my name is Virginia Galindo. I'm at 910 North County. My signature was also in question. He came to my house both times, and both times I signed it. So, I, as the others, I'm a little upset because my voice and my signature was not counted, so, but thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jamie O'Meara, 1318 Chestnut Street. I'm here speaking on behalf of Waukegan Main Street. Just to remind everybody that just because it's snowy and below zero, it doesn't mean there's nothing going on in Waukegan, especially downtown Waukegan. First of all, I'd like to announce Mardi Gras is coming. It is Mardi Gras time. I'd like to invite you all to Waukegan Main Street's annual Mardi Gras masquerade and casino night on Saturday, February 7th. It will again be held at Glen Flora Country Club. It's one of the few venues in Waukegan that can hold our crowd, which is great for us, but unfortunately means we need more places downtown to hold our events. This is our signature event and our primary fundraiser, so please mark your calendars. You can purchase tickets on our website, waukeganmainstreet.org, and look for more info in the coming weeks. If you've attended before, you know how much fun it can be, and if you haven't, please do this year. It's a whole lot of fun for a really good cause. Also happening in our downtown over the next month or so, renowned Piven Workshop will once again partner with Clockwise Theater to bring their world-class teaching methods to our youth. Fourth to eighth graders can sign up for a variety of acting classes to be held right here in downtown Waukegan at Clockwise Theater. Classes will begin on January 26th. If financial assistance is needed, there is some available, so please check directly with the Piven website for more information if you have a child that age who is interested in the theater arts. Clockwise Theater is gearing up for its next production entitled Mr. Benny, a one-man show written by Mark Humphrey starring Tim Newell. The play will run for five weeks, January 29th through February 15th, with Thursday, Friday, and Saturday 8:00 PM shows, Sunday matinees, so a time that can work for everybody. What a great way to start our new year celebrating one of our native sons. And after closing out 2014 with zombies and Santa and Martians, quite successfully, I might add, Three Brothers Theater will be issuing, and I quote from them, "An epic announcement" for their season this week. Follow them on Facebook if you want to be one of the first people to be in the know. And of course, the Genesee Theater is constantly adding shows to their ever-increasing schedule. It's hard to keep up with them, so please check back regularly with their website. There's always something for everyone. And then, of course, we have our monthly art walks, the third Saturday this month, January 17th, as well as our regular entertainment at Greentown Tavern, trivia night on Wednesdays, open mic on Thursdays, Happy Time Breakfast Saturday mornings, some of the best pancakes I've eaten in a while, and, because I'm a food person, if you haven't guessed, Happy Hour Thursday, hamburger Happy Hour Tuesdays and Thursdays at 17 North, where a half-pound burger is cheaper than McDonald's and much better for you. And for those who prefer wine, Half-Price Wine Night at 17 North every Wednesday.
Any final?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do downtown, too. Alan?
My name is Alan Keller. I live at 719 North Genesee, and I'm here this evening because I had seen my wife Laura sign the petition for Jack Dye, and I'd also seen her sign the affidavit, and I'm curious, disappointed, that the process just isn't working the way it should. I think there should be competition in elections and everything else, and there seems to be some inhibition going on here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brother Blanks, founding chief president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. I was here a couple of weeks ago, and I'm back, and I'm here to extend my appreciation to those who thus far have supported the release, my tenth anniversary release of my book, which is also not only supporting myself, but supporting our organization, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. As I often remind you, we are an organization that do not receive state or federal funds. Basically, we're creative artists. We utilize our arts to continue to raise funds for the organization. So, in doing so, I would like to thank Diane of Main Street for supporting in the purchase of the book, also Alderman Tempest as well, Alderman Cunningham, as well as Corporate Counsel Steve and Martin. So, I appreciate that. Our organization appreciates it as well. And also, back in the fall, I had made a recommendation as for, as with the audience time, to take into considerations the audience first and to move the agenda and move the audience back to the top of the agenda. I'm also, I want to extend my appreciation and say that it was, it's good to see that you did take that into advice, and it was definitely the right thing to do. So, thank you for your time, thank you for your attention, and Alderman Tempest, we have your book for you.
Thank you.
Get that book to me.
Thank you. Okay. Motion to approve the minutes as presented. We have motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman May, to approve the minutes of December 15th, 2014, and executive session minutes as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We got that done. Resolution proclamation of presentation and appointments. We have a presentation by Affordable Housing.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Lisa Paglisi. I am the CEO of Affordable Housing Corporation of Lake County, and with me is Michael Mater. Mike is our Director of Real Estate Services. First off, thank you very much for allowing us some time on your agenda, especially to Alderman Moiseo. We're here tonight because we wanted to talk about some property, single-family residential homeowner rehab programs that we offer and to explore the idea if it might make sense to discuss a partnership between AHC and the city of Waukegan. Like to begin by just telling you a little bit about our organization. We were founded in nineteen ninety-five. It's our twentieth year. We're an independent 501(c)(3), so we're a not-for-profit, and we help residents and communities rehab distressed properties, prevent foreclosure, and increase homeownership opportunities. All of our programs utilize consumer education, loans and grant administration, and again, property rehab. And in our twenty years, we have empowered seventy-six hundred first-time homebuyers to purchase their first home. About a thousand of those have been in the city of Waukegan. We've rehabbed two-hundred-and-fifty distressed properties. We've helped about thirty-six hundred households prevent foreclosure, and we've provided loans and grants to almost three-thousand households with a foreclosure rate of less than one percent. So, we've done a lot for the community, and we're in established, established presence that's, that has a good reputation. So, about our property rehab services, we've been providing owner-occupied property rehab since nineteen ninety-eight, where we provide both loans and construction services. Then, when the foreclosure crisis hit, we saw the need to expand that service to include the acquisition of foreclosed and vacant properties, which we rehabbed and resold to low and moderate income households. And all of those end buyers also receive education and counseling, so we made sure they had a loan they could afford, they met certain underwriting standards, and were prepared for stable, responsible homeownership and to be a good neighbor for the community. Now, AHC is a not-for-profit, so we're not your typical rehabber. When we acquire a home for rehab and resale, we go in and inspect it top from bottom, top to bottom. We make sure all of the major life systems, from the roof to the foundation, from electric to plumbing to HVAC and everything in between, is in good working order. Whoever buys that home shouldn't have to make any kind of major investment for the next five to ten years. Our goal is really to go in and prepare that home for the next generation. So, when we started focusing on this a few years ago, since that time, we've done about forty-five properties, but we haven't just done scattered site, one here and there. We've focused those rehabs, not just in a number of, not just in a handful of towns, but actually in a handful of neighborhoods, because our goal was to go into neighborhoods that were hard-hit by the foreclosure crisis. So, these weren't neighborhoods that were devastated, rather, they were neighborhoods that were kind of in a downward spiral, neighborhoods that were on the brink. And our intent was to go in there and prevent that spiral, to stabilize them, purchase those foreclosed and vacant properties, and get them occupied with educated homebuyers. And that's what we've done. Since that time, two of the municipalities we've worked closely with, Mundaline and Round Lake Beach, have been so happy with our services that they've taken that partnership a step, or they've actually decided to formalize a partnership with us in which they are providing funding to help us do the work. And that's what we're hoping we can begin a discussion with you about. The partnerships can really look different for each community, although in both cases, they're fairly similar. They provide a, they provide funding that acts sort of like a line of credit, where we would use those dollars to go in and acquire the property, rehab it. Once it's resold, the money goes back to the city, and then we invest it in another property. Now, the benefit of doing that is it gives the city control over the neighborhoods we work in and some of the properties that we might choose. It allows us to leverage other dollars. For example, Wauke, Round Lake Beach and Mundaline combined invested three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to date, and we were able to leverage two million dollars in funding from the Attorney General's office to do fifty homes over the next three years because they were so compelled by that municipal investment. So, there's models to look at to begin a basis for discussion. We're just hoping to pique your interest and to actually have that conversation. We do have a long history of working with the city of Waukegan. Your Community Development Department has provided us with some of their HUD grant funding every year since the late nineties to run its first-time homebuyer program. About thirty percent of our foreclosure prevention clients are from the city of Waukegan. So, we've, we've done a lot of work, not just in Lake County, but here as well, and we would really hope to begin the discussion to see if there's a way we can work together to rehab properties, increase your owner occupancy rates, and stabilize neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your report.
If we ask your questions, there might be some questions.
Oh, do you have some questions? Anybody here, let's have, have any questions? Would you like to present to her?
I just wanted to, I wanted to get this on the agenda and have Lisa and Mike come and talk. Again, this is just another strategy for us to try to deal with all of our vacant homes. We have some investors that obviously buy them. That's a roll of a dice. You don't know what's going to happen with that. We've taken down some that were obviously beyond repair, but we have another, this is just another strategy to try to get more homeownership. We have a stock that needs to be bought up. This is just another way for us to maybe try to deal with this, to get, again, like Lisa said, more homeownership. It's another avenue for people to use, and I wanted the council to get this information so maybe we can get a partnership going, we can discuss it more, obviously, but I think it's a good program that we may need to look at and figure out the details of it, again, because we need more homeownership in Waukegan, and this is just another strategy. So, I'd like to thank Lisa and Mike for coming and doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Well, thank you, Alderman Moiseo, for your comments, and thank you for your report. Very well done. Committee reports and motions, none. Public Safety Committee? Thank you. Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Conken.
Public Safety Committee met tonight at 6:30. We had two items on the agenda. Item B, however, was held over in committee, and so we will not be worried about that one tonight. But item A is authorized city to waive the bid procedure and purchase five 2015 Ford Police Interceptor SUVs at the state bid price of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars each, for a total of one-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars from Monroe Brothers Ford in Greenfield, Illinois, which has a state bid number four-zero-one-seven-one-five-nine. Funds for this purchase will be taken from the Police Department's General Fund, line item one-zero-zero-six-zero-seven-five-two-six-four-nine-three, and I saw move.
Okay. Motion made, Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beedling, to authorize to waive the bid procedure and purchase five 2015 Ford Police Interceptors SUVs at the state bid price of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars each, for a total of one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars from Monroe Brothers Ford in Greenfield, Illinois, state bid number four-zero-one-seven-one-five-nine. Funds for this purchase will be taken from the Police Department's General Fund, line Marie, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Okay, item B on the agenda, we're going to hold that over for more input.
Your Honor, I have one other item. Chief Farrell received a letter of commendation from Chief Brumlich of the Winter Harbor Police Department. I'd like to read it into the record. This is in reference to a rescue at the airport. Letter reads, "Dear Chief Tierney and Chief Farrell, please accept my sincere gratitude for your department's response to the Air One hangar on Tuesday, December 2nd, 2014, to effect the rescue of Commander Dan Bitten, who lost his balance while on top of Air One's Huey helicopter and fell off with his foot and ankle pinned in the housing. This was not a simple matter to extricate his foot and ankle and to prevent further injury, and in so doing, the men and women of your department showed outstanding teamwork and ingenuity to arrive at a safe and successful outcome. The professionalism of the Waukegan and Beach Park Fire Departments is evident, and I ask that you please commend all the personnel involved in this effort for this and the great empathy they demonstrated throughout the entire ordeal and transport to the hospital. I'm happy to report that Commander Bitten is doing fine. We are all grateful that we can always count on your department in helping keep us safe. Have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Sincerely, Chief Joe Brumlich from Winter Harbor Police Department." Our personnel involved were Battalion Chief Gene Decker, Lieutenant Jack Long, Brett Stickles, and Steve Lindsey, and firefighter/paramedic Steve Davis, Michael Shabal, Brian Jacoby, and Neil Olson. I'd like to extend, I think I speak for the council when I extend my congratulations also. Chief, thank you for informing us this, and we like to recognize and make sure that everybody knows when their fire department does real well. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Well, thank you. No old business, reports and communications, none. New business, recommended action. Approve item A. Approve a payroll dated December 26, 2014, in the amount of one million, three-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand, and twenty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. Approve a payroll dated December 26, 2014, in the amount of $1,358,022.35. FOP, yeah. And, oh, FOP clothing allowance in the amount of $65,380. Housing buyout in the amount of, how they buy out, in the amount of $2,964.89. And the final payout's in the amount of $11,275.36. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Moiseo. Call the roll, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Okay, the next three items will be voiceful. Approve a raffle sale application for Thursday night mixer Moonlight Ladies. A motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Rivera. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D. Approve raffle sale application for Fat Cat's Rescue Incorporated. Yeah, Fat Cats. I put an S on it. Fat Cat Rescue. Motion by Rivera, second by Conken, to approve this raffle sale of Thursday night mixer Moonlight Lady. No, excuse me.
No, next one.
Next one, D, excuse me. Approve raffle sale application for Fat Cat's Rescue. We just, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then, opposed? Motion carries. E. Approve raffle sale application for Waukegan Main Street. Oh, boy. A motion by Alderman Conken, boy, but he wants this one. And Alderman, who we got down there?
Moiseo.
Moiseo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. That's an ordinance resolution we have now. Motion path, yes. Ordinance and resolution, done. Alderman time?
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and I'm glad that our Public Safety Committee Chairman Conken, that you held over the situation on, you know, with the Washington School, the, what was presented in your committee in terms of a one-way. I believe that, you know, that's been going on, like I said, for, for years. I know it's not in my ward anymore. It's in Conken's ward now, but we've been having that situation go on there for longest time. I thought when they, when the school district rebuilt the Circle Drive, I thought that that would have, you know, helped ease their, their traffic issues there, with the parents picking up their, their kids, but it seemed that it didn't. To close off, or not close off road, but to make a road one-way, you know, I feel that, you know, these streets are public street, and I know some people are for it, but those that are against it, you know, I, I feel that, that we shouldn't penalize them either. So I'm, I'm glad that we're going to look at it. I like some of the things that Alderman Newsome said on your committee with having some sort of a zone in, within the school property for, for parking, so the parents can be there to wait, to pick up their children, you know, instead of being on the street, they can be in these zones that they can create. But that's something that has to be worked out with the, with the school district. But to put it on, there's this responsibility on the city of Waukegan. I don't think that's right. I think this is a, a school, district school issue, and I agree with Alderman Cunningham, how he stated that eloquently during the Public Safety Committee. I think that, you know, this should, should be worked out with the school district. I know they can do it, and of course, we'll work with them too as well, but, but I think closing or making a street one-way, I think that's hurting, you know, the taxpayers of this community. It's their street too as well. So, thank you, and I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year and stay healthy. You know, we've got the influenza out there, and that's, it's hurting a lot of people, killing children, killing adults, so keep an eye on your, your children and your adults. And, you know, stay, stay hydrated. You know, that's the key, is staying hydrated. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
I'd just like to wish everybody a Happy New Year and hopefully a very prosperous one. As we know, the code is here. I would ask all of those who are able to check in on our seniors, and for those who can need assistance at this time. Thank you. God bless.
Alderman Conken.
It's very simple. It's a brand-new year. Happy New Year, everybody, and I hope we do well this year. Thank you.
Alderman Moiseo.
Yeah, just real quick, shout-out to Rashawn Melvin, Waukegan's own, starting cornerback for the Baltimore Ravens in last weekend's playoff game. He's a great kid. I had the pleasure of teaching him in class. He's got a great sense of humor, but this kid went to Northern as a walk-on, then he was an undrafted free agent with Tampa Bay for a while, got hurt. They let him go, and he was on the Miami Dolphins' practice squad for a while. They let him go, as luck have it, has it, when injuries in the NFL, the Ravens needed a cornerback, and they picked this guy up, and they're still in the playoffs, and he's playing great. So now, we all know the beloved Bears are hurting. I'm a Ravens fan on the way out, just for my guy Rashawn. So a shout-out to Waukegan's own Rashawn Melvin, number 38, for the Baltimore Ravens. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling.
I received a lot of emails from various groups about the puppies. I, I think we have a flawed animal ordinance, and I, and I think it would be in our best interest to look at our animal ordinance and change some things in there. Far as I know, I, I think this is going to come to a quick resolution, and I, and I'm pleased by that. I, I emailed back and forth with this attorney in Stevens Point, Wisconsin, and she represents kennel clubs and things like that, and she had some very good suggestions in there, which I forwarded to, our corporation counsel got to look at it, and I, I think we can craft a much better ordinance than what we have. I, I think there's other things in there that are a problem that we need to look at. I hope things like this don't happen again. Personally, I have a problem. People that sell animals, when they put them on a piece of paper and they tape them to our light poles, and they leave them there until the rain washes them away onto the street, or they'll nail them onto trees. That's wrong. You know, out of sight, out of mind. If you're, if your dog has puppies, you know, if you put it online or something, I, I think government can get a little too big sometimes. I, I don't remember growing up, everybody had dogs, some people, their dogs had puppies, and they'd give them away, or they'd sell them, but now, it's like government steps into everything, and they, you know, they want to cut of the action on everything. And one of the suggestions this attorney made, or she suggested, that do we really want to license hobby breeders, because I don't know what the administrative paperwork is involved in that, or inspections or anything like that, but as, as she stated, it, it can be quite costly. So I, I think we, I would appreciate if we look at some of these issues as, especially what she forwarded to me. Thank you.
Alderman Newsome, pass. Alderman Tempest.
Pass.
Alderman May.
I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year as well. I just want to talk briefly about what most of our audience time was about. I'm not privy, I'm into the electoral board, how that all works and how the signatures were decided, but I guess I, I have a little bit of a concern that we have an audience full of people whose signatures were rejected, and they're here to talk about it. So I'm, I guess we'll have to talk offline. Maybe this isn't the proper venue, but I certainly hope that our electoral board can do something before we incur a lot of cost, you know, on a citizen that is just trying to get in the game. I, you know, trying to do something for his community. I, like I said, I don't know the exact process, how you determine which signatures are good and which signatures are bad, and I know the state decides who's on that electoral board, which to me is also kind of crazy, but I just hope that as a city, and, you know, as the council up here, that we promote the freedom to run for office, and we want people to be involved in this city. So I think that we should look for ways to make it easier for people to get involved and not stand in their way. So I hope that the city is going to, has some way to take a better look at this before we incur a lot of costs across the street. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Alderman Velco.
I'll echo Alderman May's comments, because what do we have if we don't have people that can run for election and put forth their best effort and then get knocked off of a ballot? So hopefully, as Alderman May said, that we'll get to the bottom of this, and hopefully we'll see either yourself, sir, or in the future, other people that won't have to run into your predicament. You might be making new ground here. So thank you for that. The last thing I have is what everybody else said also, is Happy New Year to everybody and a safe one. That's all I have.
Entertaining motion to adjourn? Alderman Moiseo, and second by Alderman May. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's adjourned.